Good night, everyone. Welcome to DIR Comes To You Eleuther Edition. Alright guys, just a few housekeeping tips before we officially start. We are live on our YouTube page. So again, as I said to the folks a little earlier, please more colorful language as we're talking because everybody will hear you. The camera will not be on you, but we will, we will be able to hear you. So tonight, we're gonna have three presentations. We're gonna have a presentation on business license renewals specifically. We're gonna have a presentation on real property tax in general. And we will have a presentation on VAT. Before we get into our presentations, I want to invite our DIR Eleuther office manager, Mr. Philip Bennerby, just to bring us some very, very brief, brief Mr. Bennerby remarks so that we can get into why we are really here. Thank you.
Well, brief for brief. Well, good night all. Just want to welcome all of you to this town meeting that we are carrying on here. Can we have a short word of prayer before we start? That's a typical way of introducing ourselves. Can we, can we start in a minute, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we can come together, discuss the business of Department of Land Revenue. We pray a blessing upon all those who are here and that they will be enlightened in terms of the information that we will share tonight. Bless us now in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. You may be seated. I'm Philip Bennerby. I'm the manager of Eleuther, responsibility for Spanish Wells as well as Harbour Island. We opened the office in Governor's Harbour on May 6th last year. We employed six persons and we contemplating employing another six in the next couple of months, hopefully. And so, we're here to serve the community of Eleuther. There are significant amount of gaps in terms of business license, in terms of real property tax, in terms of VAT. And we help to close that gap. The government recognize a significant marketplace in Eleuther as well as some of the other islands. And so, we're here to help you to better manage your affairs with respect to tax matters. We have an office in the north managed by Ms. Kelly. The number there is 470-9285. That's in Upper Bow. The main office is in Governor's Harbour where we establish the main office. And that number is 470-9299. Of course, we have an office in the south, in Roxanne area. And that is, we rotating there until we have somebody permanent there. That number is 470-9298. So if you call any of those numbers, somebody should pick up the ring within three rings. If they don't, let me know. You can get me at 470-9299. Policy is three rings. If you get more than that, let me know, please. We are gonna be mobilized tomorrow quickly. On the ground here, we'll be at the administrative office. We'll have Ms. Kelly there all day. So if you have any matters that need help, help with, she will be there as well as my colleagues from Nassau who will introduce themselves later on. And we'll also be at the Johnson Plaza. We are partnering with Alive. And so, we will have somebody there to also help you with inquiries. And so, we look forward to an interesting meeting. And we are available to answer questions all day tomorrow, all of these. My colleagues will be in town, so grab any one of them and we'll be able to help you. Good night and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennerby. So just before we get started, just to give you an idea of what exactly DIR Comes To You is. We've heard the cries of the Bahamian people. We don't answer our phones. We don't answer emails. The office is too full. So the idea was to actually come to you. So we've been going in the mall in Nassau. We've been going at Fusion. We've been setting up our offices all over. Eleuther is actually our second stop for the year. We've been in Abaco already. And we're touring the family islands just about every two weeks because we want to bring our services to you and make life a little bit more easier for our taxpayers. And that's for those thing with business licenses, real property tax, VAT, everything that we provide. So we want to continue to be at the forefront of great civil servant service to the Bahamian people. So let's get started. Our first presenter is Ms. Charlene Barton. And she's gonna talk, take us through everything there is to know about business license, applying for the first time, and renewals. Alright, so let's give a warm welcome.
Good night. I'm gonna start off by walking you through the renewal process. Once you have a current 24 license, this will be the process you will go through as it relates to applying for your business license. Alright. Once you log on to the tax administration, you will go to the returns tab. In the returns tab, you will then select annual actual. The year will be 24. Once you have done that, then you're gonna hit start return. Once you click start return, this will now be a next screen. R2, go to the bottom and scroll, save and continue. You'll get to the license overview. You can hit save and continue again. When you get to the third screen, you're gonna pause here and you're gonna go to view details. This year, once you see four, that say that you have four business licenses with the department. Once you get to that screen, then you're gonna hit change. At this screen here, if you see, if you know you only have one business licenses, one business license and you see duplicate, you can go ahead and remove the duplicate, leaving your one license. Alright, once you click change, once you hit change, this will be the screen you'll see next. You are only to put in the actual turnover. That is the only thing you touch on this screen here. You don't add no C-stake, you don't change your subcodes, you don't select anything. Right where the red arrow is, that's the only one you click. Once you put in your turnover, you can hit save and continue. We'll be back here to the screen again. If you have multiple licenses, you can then go ahead and click change for the other license. And only enter in the actual turnover. You'll hit back. This screen will give you just an overview. You'll hit save and continue. If you are over 250,000, it is by law that you provide us with an account certification. If you're at the 4 million persons, you will also should provide us with your audited financials. If you don't have anything to upload, it is not mandatory, but it's only mandatory for those that are over the 25,000 dollar mark. You'll hit save and continue. You would review your application, click the declaration box, and submit. Alright, that's the first part of you applying for your actual 24 license. So if you had a 24 business license, you now give us your actual turnover. So this is now the difference between the actual and the estimate. So I'm now gonna go through the estimate, which is another part of the process. Alright, so we'll be back to the returns tab. You'll click annual estimate. The year will be 25. And then you'll hit start return. You'll click and save and continue on the first two screens, which will be the start in the license overview. Once you get to the detail screen, you will click on here, say add detail. This pop-up will happen. You are to click yes, load from previous details. Once you click yes, your license is populated. You go to change. Again, if there are duplicates, you can go ahead and remove the duplicates. When you get here, you are to only enter in your estimated turnover. Alright, that is the only box you filled out here in this one. Once that's completed, you hit save. You go back. If you have multiple licenses, you would then click change on the other one and enter in the estimated turnover. Once you hit back, you get here to the license detail screen. You then hit save and continue. You will upload documents. If you're over 250,000, you can reload your accounting letter again or your audited financials. Save and continue. We'll be back to the last screen where you click on your declaration and then you hit the button submit. Once you have completed those two steps, you have officially put in your renewal for 2025. And there's a minimum of 14 days that you will get your business license.
Sure.
I'm not renewing the license. I'm actually here to learn how to get the license.
First time?
First time.
Okay.
And maybe I can go to the office tomorrow?
That's fine. You can, yes.
The floor is open for questions with regards to business license. Yes, sir, goodbye.
That process, you do that annually?
Yes. Yes, the licenses run from January to December. Once you're under 100,000, there's no fee. Anything over 100,000, you're then taxed on a percentage depending on what is your turnover.
So it is a, it's a new business. I'm sorry, that's evening. It's a new business that doesn't have a turnover. Still free?
Yeah. The only thing you pay for is, you pay for the trade name, which is $25. And that is only paid on our system. That is a registered general's $25 fee. So as for the business license, it is free.
With the trade name, right?
Uh-huh.
You pay that annually, $25?
No, once you pay that one time, that's it.
That's your name?
Yes, that's yours.
Can I suggest, just suggest that with the presentation, if a flyer could be provided so when you go through it, it'll be more understandable to the audience?
Okay.
Because some of us, you know, getting up there and seeing this very difficult.
Okay, we have, we have flyers. We have YouTube videos. So if you want, there's a QR code in the back you can scan. It takes you directly to our YouTube page. You can save the video. You can watch it anytime when you go home while you're doing it. It shows you exactly, guess what I showed you and gives you, that same point by point for you to go over.
I, I understand that. I understand that. But I'm of the view of you hand it out, if you're making the presentation, we could physically follow it and would have a better understanding than just a presentation on YouTube.
Okay.
It's just a suggestion. I know for, for me, that would be better.
Okay. I understand.
Is there the option for persons like, who doesn't understand it to actually go into the office? And you have someone to guide you through it step by step?
Yes, yeah. We have persons down in our Governor's Harbour office. Also, Ms. Kelly is aware of what to do as well. So we do have persons that can walk you through the process on my end.
And also, if you're, if you're not able to get through to anybody here, our call center line is very active. And we're also very active on social media with Facebook and Instagram. If you send us a message on Facebook, we respond within like 30 minutes or so. Yes, sir. Look, I'll get to you, I'll get to you too.
No, just a comment I was gonna make. I know you said that we are not able to get in contact with anybody here. You know, Mr. Bennerby said to give him a call.
Yeah.
Yeah, he did. Yeah, he did. Yes, sir. Right, they're coming to you right after. Yes, sir.
Ms. Kelly is based in Upper Bow?
Yes.
Yes.
She'll be coming to our round at any time?
Yes, we, we are coming to Harbour Island every month, once a month.
Once a month? Can we make that once a week?
Yeah. Cause there'll be an office here because of the fact that there's so many businesses there. Going across, you have to pay the hits, you have to pay the comebacks. And they're like, is there an option to have an office here? And we basically go to you at the office here and make it easier?
We, we are looking at, of course, this is a non-sensational feminine basis. But what the ministry is saying is our revenue can go up somewhat. But so, in terms of economies of scale, the, the probability this year is unlikely. But that is under major consideration.
Yes, sir. Right.
Alright. Good evening, everyone.
Sure.
My first question, I want clarification. All our submissions should be in by January 31st?
Yes.
Now, I'm gonna offer my outlook on that. As we all know, we start off the year very slowly in the banking sector, real estate sector, and the government sector. We're having New Year's, Christmas, and then a holiday shortly after. May I humbly suggest that we extend that slightly? Because my justification on that really is, we have a three-month period. Let's cut it in half. So the onus is on us, this business onus, who I think everybody in this room is wanting to do the right thing. We want to be compliant. But at the same time, as I think we can all agree, there are some aspects of doing business in this country that are challenging. So why can't we give that actual week or two? Because it's very challenging to get all your submissions in by January 31st. Now, I personally have an accountant that does everything. And that was my second tier. If my accountant doesn't have everything in, whose responsibility is I? I know it's me, but why am I hiring an accountant to do it if it's gonna fall on me anyway? And I do agree, I think a couple of people said that we should really have an office in Harbour Island. There's a huge business community here. We are, and I, I again, I think I speak for most people there. We want to be compliant. We want to do the right thing, but we want to be guided in the right direction. So my, my number one point is, can we please think about, I know it's cumbersome and it's not gonna happen today, but can we move that time deadline a week or two? Because I, I, I'm having a challenge. Now, as a second time business owner, but I'm going too far into this, but because I think you spoke to getting my trade name. Do I have to renew that every year?
No.
No, no. Trade name is a lifetime.
Okay. So as long as we are compliant on that first step that you walked us through, renewing for the trade, I mean, for the business license?
For the business license, yeah.
Okay. That's my only comment, but thank you guys for coming here.
So just to, just to give a response with regards to the extension. I know that it's not always said or advertised. But extensions have, extensions have been given to companies that would have requested it from our acting controller, Michelle Deschron, just simply by way of a request via email or letter directly to her. And they review on an individual basis according to if you, if you need more time to get your financials together, if your audit team needs more time for that.
But I, I think my, I probably didn't clarify it, but my main point wasn't the financials. But sometimes you need to work on the letter from the Ministry of Works and the Ministry of Environment.
Not, not for a renewal.
Not for renewal.
Not for renewals. Renewals, the only thing you are giving us is our, is your figures.
Is your figures, yes.
Your turnover. If you're over the 250,000 dollar mark, you then provide us with an audited document. If you're at 5 million. If you're anywhere from 250,000 to 4.9, you give us an accounting letter. Anything over 5 billion dollars is audited financials.
I'm not gonna hog up the field here, but my last comment, if you guys, whomever, could comment on the differentiation between the estimated and actual numbers. I always felt a bit challenged with that.
Okay. Alright, so the, the, we call it the BLAA. The B-L-A-A, which is your actual, that is your confirmed turnover for the year. So just say you had a 24 license, you would have given us an estimate. We're now done with 24. You're cleaning up your books. You now giving us your actual figure which you actually made. So that payment you would have made on that estimate, that payment then goes towards your actual. You pay, if there is a debt to pay a difference, you pay the difference. If there's a credit, you have a credit that now rolls over now to your estimate again. And you give us another 25 estimate where you're anticipating what you're gonna make again. And once you make payment on that, that then goes now to your actual 25 actual that you would file now in '26.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to make a point in reference to the fact that we don't have an office here and we're not sure anyone is coming. But I have been using both the portals, cause I have a few businesses. And I have been interacting with the Governor's Harbour office of persons. They have been very helpful. Once you give them your 10 number, they would guide you through the portal to your, yourself. And if you have a state that you're standing in the case that you're, you're meeting the deadline, you can actually go onto the portal and create a case where they give you an inquiry number where you can say actually what, you know, what you want them to do, you're gonna be late. And they will respond to you. Cause I've seen that with myself.
Thank you so much. It's about for you doing a good job on there. Do you have any further questions for Ms. Barton relating to business license renewals starting for the first time? Ms. Barton, the payment deadline is?
The payment, the submission deadline for business license is January 31st. You can also give us your estimated figure and even in your actual, you can always change that later. And if you're on a payment plan, most big businesses use until March 31st to make that final payment.
And if I am dealing with a government agency or the bank of Arms Customs and they request my 2025, but I've not received it from inland revenue, what do I, what can I tell them?
If you haven't received a midland revenue, you can just give them the Governor's Harbour office a call. We try and get it to you as soon as possible. We have a minimum of 14 days that we're getting the licenses out. Some persons get them before, some, if it's there, maybe some system issue, you may have to look further into it.
As well as if you submit in January, your 2024 license is valid until March 31st. So you're able to use the 2024 until you get the actual 2025 from the department. So don't allow any agency or bank to tell you that you must show a 2025.
No one should hold you up. Your license is still valid until March 31st.
It's still valid until March 31st once you would have submitted it in January. The most you may have to do is, is show a, show proof of submission, which you would receive in your online account or email. I think you have, sorry, Mr., before you go. Okay. Mr. Bennerby? Yeah.
I just wanted to make a comment regarding outstanding balances that may be large and you need some financial help with it. I found a number of places in construction that I'm not paying their, their fees for two years, three years for some reason. And so, we, we've been able to do a financial arrangement where they pay half of it and then we give them a share, at least another year to, to do that. So if you have that financial arrangement in place, then I can call Ms. Barton and she, and we can get the license released so that you can, you're able to do business. There's a number of places that have contracts coming up and they can't do the contract because they can't get a license. So there, there's a, there's a financial arrangement that can be had as well if you find yourself in self-dedication like that as well. Just wanted to put that in there.
Alright, are there any further questions?
I would also be at the back if anybody wants to come and just get some more information.
Yes, and we have Ms. Jacqueline Moxey at the back who's acting live if anybody needs to find anything about a case they may have submitted already or if they need to know the process for how to submit.
One, one last question on business license tab that I've been on for a while. Is it still one percent on return?
No, it depends, no. Anywhere from 100,000 to 400,000 to 500,000, you pay a 0.5%. 500,000 to 5 million, you pay a 0.75%.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Barton. We're gonna move on now to our real property tax presentation. Don't give me that look, Jasmine. And that's gonna be done by Jasmine Sweeting. Take it away, my dear.
Okay, good night, everybody. As Mr. Williams had said, my name is Jasmine Sweeting and I work in the billing section in Providence office. Okay. Real property tax would have been established in 1969 and it is taxed on all land and building. Now, the only exception we have is for Bahamians for vacant land. Besides that, you pay on basically everything else besides owner of office. Besides that, you pay on basically everything else besides owner-occupied homes. That's mainly the only other exception that we have. Okay? Now, once your property value exceeds the three hundred thousand dollar mark, you are then taxable. A lot of persons think that just because my business is under three hundred or my apartment is under three hundred, I'm exempted. That is not the case. That kind of property is taxed, okay? So for those type of properties, we have the residential class for Bohemians only. For foreigners, if they have a second home or they have apartments, that is taxed at the commercial rate. Okay? Owner-occupied properties, like I had said, um it will be used as your sole dwelling home. And, thank you, is your sole dwelling, and you only get the one exemption, okay? So there's no more than one, it's just that one, but the minute you go over, you're taxed. Owner-occupied is taxed at a rate of point six to five currently for the next two hundred thousand after the exemption. And then after you exceed that five hundred, it's taxed at a rate of one percent. So we have different tiers. And the residential property is taxed at a rate of point six to five straight across the board. There's no tier for the residential classification. Residential property can be anything that is not owner-occupied, and it cannot exceed more than five units. If it exceeds more than five units, it will be then deemed as commercial, Bohemian or foreign. It doesn't make a difference. Okay? Commercial property is property that includes more than five units, even if they are used as dwellings, and it refers to all the properties that are owned by non-Bohemians. Family islands, who do not qualify for the owner-occupied exemption. And then there's the vacant land class. As I said, Bohemians don't pay, so the vacant land class is mainly for the foreigners. That is taxed at a rate of two percent. It would have increased from the year twenty nineteen to where it was previously one point five. Okay? Does anybody in here currently own property, have a valid assessment number currently? You do? You do? Okay. For those of you who do not or may plan to do it in the future, we have made some changes. So real property tax is now incorporated in basically every business you have to do with the government. If you pay off your mortgage, you have to come to us before you get your papers from the bank. If you are delinquent with your taxes, the bank pays it and adds it to your mortgage. Um for backstump, if you purchase a property and you go to get it backstumped, you have to come to us first to get an assessment number assigned to it. So we're now trying to integrate property tax into everything because a lot of persons have not known about property tax previously. So um when it comes to registering, we have a few important forms.
Okay, I have a question. Uh going back to that re-vacant, is this for vacant property?
Yeah, foreign-owned vacant.
So as a Bohemian, if you own a vacant piece of property.
You don't pay.
Yeah, but like going back to that slide that you had there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh go go to uh no, go back the other way. Um so to register to get a ten number for your vacant piece of property, you have to have an appraisal and a survey though?
No.
Uh I read that wrong, but.
No, um in some cases on the family islands, we do ask for an appraisal since it's a lot harder for us to gauge where the property is. So if you already have an appraisal done, that's perfect, but we don't really pressure you into getting one done because we know it can be really expensive. So what we tend to do is, we tend to use the consideration value on your conveyance for what you purchased.
Of the conveyance?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know they're low, they could be much lower.
I know there's always a discrepancy with um because I've seen it before where the the value of the land and the conveyance could be a hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And then um sometimes, I don't think it happens always, but um it it's sold at a lower value and we still have to pay the stamp tax, the conveyance on.
On our value.
Your value.
Yeah.
I did wanna put that word in my.
Yeah. You do. You um backstump actually does do that. You may sell it for a lower value than what we have it as, but you have to get a stump on our value.
I see.
Yeah, that's the case. But you do, but as the only you do have a a right to object to it if you don't agree. Objections can be filed from the time that we issued the bills, which would have been around October seventeenth, up until March thirty-first.
Say, are you owning property on the family island for five hundred thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
As a Bohemian, who I think property.
Is anything on it? What kind of building?
Presley.
Your home? You don't pay. You don't pay at all.
So if I leave a million dollars, I can pay it.
Bohemians don't pay on the family island at all, for now.
Sounds like it's coming.
Well, thanks, and we want to encourage everybody to register your property because the government is uh has a bill now in terms of land reform, and that's kind of emerging. And so to get ahead of that, we encourage many persons to start um registering your your land. Um you know, you might find, go out to bed, you know, somebody else will see a land as well.
Oh, yeah.
But uh and so that's important, this land reform, I think is an important piece of legislation that the government is en- enacting. Uh but to get ahead of that, you want, we would like to suggest that you start registering now as much as possible so that uh you know, if anybody else come with that, um before he's rather than the whole holds it.
Yeah.
So but but we are on the on the assessment, as part of our additional staff, we we are we are hoping to move the drones, uh the illusion, uh as establishing a platform for family island where, and that's why we have uh four young men uh be employed and and we will uh then be able to look at your property, come about and assess everything else in longitude, latitude, and have accurate um information in respect to um the property and and therefore the assessment will be uh very accurate. We do stuff on the phones now in terms of that, but it can be offered a degree or two. But um that is what one of the main initiatives of this office, be able to um um accurately gather information, gather data, uh of course, and then we process that as well as um uh significant amount of Airbnb's here that are not registered, and you know, we wanna encourage that as well.
I just just one last comment on it. When it comes to the evaluation assessment on the properties, I'm an appraisal. So does the government? Or have I misunderstood? You have your.
Yeah, we do.
Now, I think you said.
When it comes to registering, we now no longer accept paper. We now do everything digitally. So one of the forms that we require is a declaration form. By law, you are required to decla- declare your property every year, okay?
Even on family islands?
Yeah, every year.
Why?
Yes. And technically, we are supposed to reassess property every five years. But because of the man par, we don't really get to. The last big reassessment we did was in twenty twenty-two, and we plan to do one again for twenty twenty-six.
Last question. I promise. Are the appraisers and the assessors Bohemian?
Was that in our office?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that's new.
How?
Because I had, um it used to be done by a Canadian firm. Um so I just wanna know that the appraisals and the assessments are done by a Bohemian?
No, a- all of our assessors are within the office.
When, when did this take effect, that one property's have to be with?
That's in the acts from real property taxes in Canada. It's just that we haven't been able to police it as much as we like, but we're starting to now.
I have a question. I know you said everything is gonna be computerized.
It already is.
Great, do you have a backup in case the computer cracks? Because we know that's a portion of it.
In that case, in that case, we'll have to, most likely, you'll have to email the documents most likely, or we just will have to accept paper in the meantime.
I'm saying what if, what like, I know they had a scare last year where the computer systems went down for for one day.
Mm-hmm.
So if that happens and you cannot send an email, who's gonna send the email?
Mm-hmm.
And what do you do?
We just have to wait till it expires.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
Um so on 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 this property registration, uh it has to be done every uh, how does that work?
The declaration is to be done every.
Pardon?
The declaration is to be done every year.
On the declaration.
The registration is a one-time option.
So, okay, so the declaration, um you said it in the Inland Revenue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so nothing changes with your property within a year?
You still stay that on the declaration, just, yeah.
Yeah, um because I I looked at my my bill for my land revenue, and it got improvements posted on my bill, right?
Mm-hmm.
I improved on it quite a bit, so I'm trying to figure this out, um.
Your property is vacant?
No.
What's on it? Your, is your home?
Building.
Okay, so that, what you see as improvement is the value of your building?
The same, right, they talk to you.
That's that's a lot for Sweeting to.
Okay, so the decoration form is one of the forms that we would need when registering. And we would also need an affirmation form only in special cases. The affirmation form is only if you live on the property and you want us to apply your exemption. The exemption is not automatic. If you do not tell us that it's your home, we will tax it until you say so.
So that's probably what happened to me because I was getting, for my residence, I was getting bills for years.
Probably.
Yeah.
Until you come in, we don't have.
Yeah, and I I got it sorted out, and they were billing me for years, taxpayers.
Yeah. And then we also now are enforcing the customer detail form. We are trying to go away with the paper bills that we send out, so we now want as much email addresses, phone numbers, NIV numbers, passport numbers, as much as possible so we, so that we can do away with the paper. So if you, if everybody who knows property can, fill out a customer detail form and email it to the property tax inquiry inbox so we can have them adjust it. And then for the objections, like I had said, this would be the form that you fill out, the real property tax inquiry form. On this form, we get your pers- your customer detail information and your query as well, so that's a two-in-one.
Where can you find the forms?
It's all on the website, all of the forms are on the website. And then for those pensioners, we do offer the pensioner discount for your home, for Bohemians only, but your home has to be taxable. If your home exceeds the three hundred, it has a tax of two dollars, we can take fifty percent off and drop it down to one dollars. And then you get a ten percent discount if you pay it, or so you only got fifty cents.
So now these, oh, I mean, these these pensioners, all of their properties or just?
Just their home. Only the home. It doesn't apply for apartments or commercial buildings.
But what constitutes a pensioner?
You have to be as near as the police office, so my pension starts not at sixty or sixty-five.
I thank you, so.
But once you bring us the card that has the senior on it showing that you're already getting your benefits, we apply the the um the waiver for you. We just have to see that you you're getting your benefits from NIV.
Okay.
And there's no time limit on it, you can come at any point throughout the year and have it done. Okay, so that's pretty much property tax. Any more questions regarding property taxes?
When is the payment deadline for real property tax, can you?
Um the payment deadline is March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and if you pay your bill in full, you get ten percent off of your current tax, not the total tax. If you owe arrears, it's not off the full date. That's, I have to be very specific with that.
So I I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shoot the 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 elephant in the room. Then do you perceive uh your property tax covered in the family island?
I can't say. I just, I I don't.
That's a, that's a government, that's a government question. I don't really get a government answer. So that's above our our pay grade, so we won't be able to say that. Are there any other questions for Ms. Sweeting with regards to real property tax?
Now, you can pay it in a in a storm as much as you'd like, as long as it's paid in full before the end of the year.
Okay.
Or if you want to take advantage of the ten percent, it has to be paid in full by the end of March.
Okay.
You pay however you like.
Yes, my question for foreigners who are, who pay real property tax, is there some consideration for them being uh, what's it called, having a residential?
A permanent resident? Yeah. No.
No, so it's still a foreigner.
Yeah. They don't hold the Bohemian passport, so yeah. You said you had a question?
I think he had, he had asked his last question.
I I I gave out my my photo, but then I will la- the last thing that I will ask, again, I do appraisals for a living too, but um the appraisal process has changed a lot in the last, in the last year. So let's let's say, for example, because we're going to a United States-based system, which I disagree with. So let's say, and I'm just wondering if Inland Revenue uses this system. Let's say you have a house.
Mm-hmm.
And when I go appraise a house and it has a pool, now we're putting in forty thousand dollars, which is based off this American system. Oh, and I love American system, but. Exactly. So we are putting in these figures, these arbitrary figures that we are being given. I'm just wondering if Inland Revenue is using the same.
Rates?
Apparatus that we are using through the Harbour's Real Estate Association as a licensed appraisal.
Oh, I wouldn't know. The assessors don't really publicize the rates that they use to come up with their values.
It's a weird question, I get it, because I don't understand it either.
Well, we the 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 assessors appraise everything on that property.
Yeah, they do.
You pick up the pool, you pick up the homehouse.
Yeah, because you have to.
You pick up the generator, we pick up the gas hose, yeah.
It's a whole, one-year-old, it's a ten-year-old.
Right.
Is it big because it's small?
Yeah, well.
Honor-based, honest, based on location as well.
We take this of the, and we, and 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 the assessment is done based on the size of it.
And and you got that drone up too.
Okay, and then it's, the house is actually measured, so we actually measure the house physically. They go on site and measure if it's fifty by sixty, they do that. They take a skit, a sketch, if there's a pool, we have that, if there's a little pumping house, there's a, whatever else there is. So we capture everything on the property, and then we go through.
Which is how it should be done.
Yeah, and then we go through.
And what we must remember, that everything that you do with your home is an improvement. If you put pyramids in the ground, if you paint the wall, if you add a shed in the back.
It's improved.
That's considered an improvement.
But it's, it's, yeah, it's upgraded.
Yeah, everything is, can be an improvement. Just got a final question before we move on.
This, this question is about, would you just say, so because we have proven ourselves, we gotta get taxed for it? What, what do they wanna know?
Of course, the government must get their charge.
Yeah. Yes, you're improving, if, if your neighbors around you improve all of their homes, that means your entire neighborhood is improved. Which means you, who have done nothing, will, 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 will suffer the result of the improvement. That means your entire neighborhood, the entire value of the area you live has gone up.
Yeah.
I, I think something like that may cause persons now to don't wanna do, not stay where they are. I mean, I think, I think we are fostering now, you know, activity by doing stuff like that, which can tax some people because they want better life, I guess.
Like, buy a small house.
Yeah.
That's just my thought.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sweeting, for your presentation on real property tax. We'd like to move on to our final presenter. I know it's gonna be very enlightening. Everybody likes to hear about VAT. Ms. Crystal Hyler, and she'll present to you guys about value on the tax.
Alright, good night, everyone. As you said already, I'm Crystal Hyler, and I'm gonna go through some VAT filings. I wanna start off with a bit of basics about VAT, though. Um, VAT was introduced in twenty fifteen, and it's a consumption tax. Basically, that means that anything that's consumed, whether it's a service or an item, you get taxed on it. But it's a consumption tax that has to be consumed in the Bahamas. So if it's not consumed here, if it's consumed in the US, there is no VAT tax on it. VAT has had a number of different rates throughout the years as we've moved from government to government, but we're currently at ten percent. And if you listen to the Prime Minister's address a few weeks ago, you would have heard him say that they are moving non-prepared food items in the grocery store to five percent. Um, that is something they're looking to do in April, so we'll probably be adding a few lines to our VAT returns for that change. Um, like I said earlier, it's a charge, it's on goods and services, so anything that's imported, we'll have VAT on it, anything that's exported out, we'll not. Um, persons who will charge VAT are VAT registrants. Now, if you have a business license, you would have received a tin, a tin. Um, that tin does not mean you are a VAT registrant, you can be a tin-only person, because the tin is how we identify you in the system. When you receive a VAT certificate, that is when you become a VAT registrant, and you should be charging VAT. Um, that's where mandatory voluntary and the registration threshold come in. When you hit a hundred thousand in turnover, that is when you become a mandatory VAT registrant. Now, some people will say, well, I never hit the threshold, and I'm registered for VAT, I have a VAT certificate, but I wasn't charging VAT because I didn't hit the threshold. Voluntary registrants are people who don't hit the threshold, but if you have a VAT certificate, you must charge VAT and you must file for VAT. If you're under the threshold and you don't wanna be a VAT registrant, you either A, don't sign up, but if you're already signed up, then you need to cancel VAT if you don't wanna charge VAT. As long as you have a VAT certificate and the government has not said that your VAT is canceled, you are expected to charge and file the VAT, regardless of whether you're hitting the threshold or not. Um, this is what a VAT certificate will look like, you'll normally get it in your email. Um, some rules for people who are VAT registrants, they have to display this somewhere in the business, so that persons coming in and buying from the store will know that they are a VAT registrant. Your prices should be VAT-inclusive, you should be keeping proper records. Sometimes you'll see, NIN revenue say they wanna do a review, and they ask you for your POS systems. They're expecting you to have some record of your sales and expenses. And you have to file on time, or you get a filing late fee. Um, the VAT equation, some persons will only tell us what their sales and VAT are, and then will say, it's so high, the VAT we have to pay is so high. But your equation is actually what we call your output, minus your input, which gives you what your VAT is. So sometimes you will hear someone from NIN revenue, we like to use the jargon of giving us your input-output worksheets. Basically, that's your sales and expenses. Your output is your sales, so that's the VAT you would have received from your customers. Your input is the VAT for items you bought, for your taxable activity, whatever it is your business does. The VAT you're actually paying is your sales minus your expenses. And that tells us what you either need to pay, or in some times, if you had a lot of expenses during the period, you might wind up with a credit. Um, there's two different accounting methods, there's invoice and cash. For the invoice method, that means that you file during the period that the invoice was built, versus the cash method, where you would file when cash is actually exchanged. So an example of that is, we're in January now. If you had a bill, let's say you bought supplies on December eleventh. You were billed with an invoice that said December eleventh. That means that that invoice should be filed whenever you file your December return. But if you got billed, and that's if you're on an invoice method, if you're on the cash method, you may have got invoiced in December, but you didn't actually pay that vendor until January. On the cash method, because cash is being exchanged in January, you file in January. So it's important to know whether or not we have you set up as an invoice or cash in the system. Um, sometimes it'll be set up based on your category. Um, based on the turnover you have for the year, we'll put you in a category of either petty, small, very small, large, very large taxpayers. And based on those categories, normally we'll say if you're invoice or cash basis when we register you in the system. Our large taxpayers, anyone who make five million or more in turnover, they do not have a choice. They have to file monthly, and they have to file on invoice. Anyone underneath that amount, you could be set up as quarterly, well, initially, we'll set you up as quarterly, but if you wish, you can actually change between quarterly and monthly, or cash and invoice. There's a form, I'll show you where to find it, on our website that you fill out, where you can request to go on whichever basis works best for your accounting system that you work on personally. The people, like I said, who cannot change this are the large taxpayers. Because of that large turnover, when it comes time for us to review those paperwork, the department has them on a monthly invoice method, just for a smoother transition of that high turnover amount. There are two different reporting methods that you can be on, standard and flat rate. Standard is a regular VAT return, where you charge, um, ten percent on all your sales, and you file at that same ten percent. Now, flat rate is normally what we use for smaller businesses. You can request to be on the flat rate, in which case you'll still charge at ten percent like a usual VAT registrant, but on the flat rate, when you put in your figures, it's actually having you billed at six point five percent. Now, the difference between these two is with standard, you can actually put in your sales at the ten percent, and then you can claim your expenses, so that you get the difference. With flat rate, you can't just put in your expenses. The only expenses you can put in for flat rate are capital items, so like things that depreciate, like machinery, um, office equipment that you would have bought. Those items are the only items that you can claim on that return, and it's because they're gonna bill you at the six point five instead of the ten, even though you're collecting ten. So their return is shorter. A standard return has about twenty-seven lines, a flat rate only has about nine. And most people on flat rate will only use line one, which is basically what were your sales during that period. Um, I'm gonna go through filing a VAT return. Um, as you would have seen in the business license return, you log in the same way into your portal. If you only have one business, one tin, you will go straight into your one tin. If you have multiple tins, however, when you log in, you'll see the different tins listed, and you'll have to click the tin that you wanna file on. One note that should be stated, if you have, there's a difference between having multiple tins and then having multiple businesses on a tin. If you have multiple tins and only one of those tins is a VAT registrant that has met the threshold, then only that one tin has to file VAT. But the tin itself is what is the VAT registrant. If you have a tin that has five businesses on it, and all five businesses make twenty thousand a year, that tin with all five businesses has met the threshold, so every business on that tin now has to file VAT. So when you file VAT for that tin, all of those businesses are filing one joint return for having hit the threshold. It's the tin that's the registrant, not just the business.
You wanna say that again?
So, next slide, John. Okay, yeah, so if, there's a difference between having different tins. Normally, if you have limited companies, that means their liability is their own, so you would get different tins for those companies. However, if your companies are not, um, incorporated companies, and they're all on one tin, the NIN revenue is looking at the turnover for all of the companies on that tin, the tin is the VAT registrant. So all those companies, if one, if only one company hits the threshold and the other doesn't, both companies have now become VAT registrants. So both companies will then start charging VAT and will file together in a joint return. Um, this is basically, if you have to switch between tins, you can just click your profile to the top, and you can click switch taxpayer to go throughout. It also allows you to change your password, and basically, anything you need to change on the profile page, you can change it also just by clicking your name in the top corner. Um, but to file a VAT return, you file it, the beginning part is just like how you file a business license. You go to returns, file a return, you put in VAT and the year that you're looking for, instead of putting in business license. That's basically how you start the filing process. You click on the return you wanna start, and you start from there. Um, you go into enter filing, or you could go to save and continue. Either one will then bring you into the VAT return. Now, this is a, what a standard VAT return looks like. Like I said, it has about twenty-seven lines. Most people will only use four of these lines. People look at it, and they're like, there's a lot of lines here, what am I supposed to file? All of these lines don't have to be filled in. Um, four of them are the main ones that people will use, which will be four, five, eighteen, and nineteen. Um, but I'm gonna go through a few of the general ones you might use. So line one, zero-rated, like I said, if you sell something, let's say you sold something to an American, they're taking that good out of the country. It's not gonna be used here, because it's a consumption tax for in the Bahamas, it's zero-rated. So that goes on that top line, there's no VAT on that. Um, line two is exempt, so that would be, take for instance, um, insurance companies, they are insurance interest. Those are, those are exempt, so that goes on line two. You could get a full schedule of what's zero-rated and what's exempt. In the VAT Act, I believe it's pages ninety-eight and ninety-nine, it's called schedules one and two, it gives you a listing of what those items would be, that would go on those lines. Most people don't really use those lines, except for certain specialized industries, like I said, like insurance, they, they would know who they are. Most people will be using line four. Line four is basically your sales inclusive of VAT. So whatever your sales were with the VAT figure together goes on line four. And line five will automatically take out what the VAT is and put it on line five, based on what you put in line four. Um, the next line, a lot of people will use, like I said, is gonna be eighteen and nineteen, but I'm also gonna go through twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, because those are where you import. So twelve is the value of capital imports without VAT, no VAT in there. Thirteen is the value of just regular imports without VAT, and line fourteen is the VAT of VAT. So, like Mr. Benavides was saying about construction companies, let's say you bought, you imported a tractor, you imported some fencing or some cement. The value of the tractor goes on line twelve, the value of the fencing and the cement will go on line thirteen, and the VAT for those items will go on line fourteen. Also, any customs fees that you might have paid while bringing those in. Processing fee, line thirteen, VAT for that processing fee, line fourteen. So twelve, thirteen, and fourteen is only imports. A lot of people don't have to import items, but if you do, those are those lines. If you're not doing any importing, then you're gonna go to lines seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Seventeen, just like the import lines, seventeen is capital. Eighteen is just regular expenses, anything that doesn't depreciate in value, and nineteen is the VAT. So for that same example, your tractor that you bought here on the island goes on line seventeen. That fencing and that cement goes on line eighteen, the VAT of those items go on line nineteen. That in a nutshell is basically the main lines that you're gonna need for a VAT return. Those are pretty much the lines that everyone uses. Um, after you put in those lines, you can click save and continue. Um, it will ask you for additional documents, like if you see here, it says optional, and that's because it won't stop you. If you don't have the supports, it won't stop you from filing the return. We recommend that you do put in the supports, because if by chance you get reviewed or audited, the support's already on the system, they don't have to ask you for them. But this won't stop you from the return going through. You can save and continue. Um, these, again, like I said earlier, sometimes they'll ask you for an input-output worksheet. It looks somewhat like this, basically what they're looking for is a listing, your output, a listing of your sales, your input worksheet, a listing of your expenses. They're looking for the date of whatever it is you bought or sold, the invoice number, the tin number of the person you bought or sold it to or from, who that person was. They're looking for the subtotal, the VAT, and then the total, the complete total. That's basically what they're looking for when they ask for those worksheets, they just want a listing of those things. If they ask you for an audit, a review, an amendment, all of those people will start by saying to send in that input-output worksheet. That's what they're asking for, those listings. Um, they will also ask you for the customs documents if you did imports. It is mandatory that any type of review or amendment that we're doing, we have to ask for those input-output worksheets and the customs documents. So those, those are gonna be mandatory across the board. This is what they look like, this is the single administrative document that they'll request. And customs should give this to you, anytime you bring something in and you're paying customs, they should give you a stamped copy of this. Um, once all of that's submitted, you can review your return. Um, and this is actually just an example of a flat rate return, like I said, it's only like nine lines as opposed to a regular one that's twenty-seven. Um, then you'd have the declaration to say that everything to your knowledge is correct, and you save and submit it, and that's how you file the return. Um, registrants are expected to file on the twenty-first. So if you're a monthly filer, your December return would have been due on January twenty-first. If you're a quarterly filer, then October to December's return is due January twenty-first. It's always twenty-one days after whatever your filing period is. The large taxpayers, there's a specific unit that we have for large taxpayers, those five millions and above, they have to file by the fourteenth. So everyone else is the twenty-first, they are the fourteenth. You would get a letter that tells you you're a part of that unit, if that's you. If that's not you, if you didn't get the letter, then you file on the twenty-first. Um, if you're trying to cancel your VAT, by the way, you're a registrant and you're trying to cancel, you are required to file until that cancellation comes through. Even if you tell us, hey, the business is shutting down, we're not charging VAT, you can file a zero return, that's fine. But until the cancellation comes through, because our system won't let it cancel until it sees everything is up to date, just keep filing those zeros until you actually get that letter that says, okay, your VAT is canceled. Um, amending a VAT return, for this one, if you made an error on your return, you can go in and amend it. The system allows you to do it up to a year. If it's past a year, you would have to put it into an inquiry case with the support, so that we can do it from the backend. But if it's in the year, you could go to the My Tax tab and click tax accounts, and then it's gonna bring up all of your filings. In here, it'll bring up business license and VAT, you can filter for just VAT to the top left-hand corner. And you can click the actual blue, where it has the period, you click that blue period that you wanna amend. And then you'll see options available pop up, until you're right, it says correct, amend the return. Basically, it's gonna send you through the sale. Basically, it's gonna send you through the same process of the return, you just put in whatever figure you wanna amend, save and continue and you'll put in the reasoning that you needed to amend this figure. Now, when you amend, you are required to have supports. It says optional, like it always does, because it won't stop you from submitting it. But if you wind up having an amendment case made and an officer gets that amendment case, they now have to review what it is that you put in. And like I said, off the bat, any type of review, amendment, refund case we're working, audit we're working, we have to ask for those input-output worksheets and we have to ask for all your customs documents if you had imports. From there, they'll decide, they look through those input-output worksheets and based on whatever your activity is, whatever sales you're doing, they'll look through who the vendors are that you might have and if they can see, okay, this aligns with that taxable activity, they may not request that invoice. Um, if they come across a vendor that they may not be familiar with, they may request an invoice for that person. Normally, they'll request about ten percent of whatever figure it is that you're filing, they'll normally request about ten percent uh, to see the actual invoices for those. But once you send them the listing, a lot of people ask, why have to send in every invoice? Unless you're being audited and audit asks for every invoice for most amendments, refunds or reviews, we'll just ask for the input-output worksheet and we'll just select a few of the invoices and ask you to submit them. We won't ask for all unless it's a really, really small return. Um, go through John. I just kinda wanted to go through some of the tabs on the system, just in case anyone had any questions about them. In inbox, like I said, if you're past that window of a year to amend on the system and you need to amend something from further back or if you need to send in supports, someone requested supports and you weren't able to get them inside the actual return filing. If you go to inbox and new messages, that's normally where you make an inquiry case, an ENQ case that comes with a number. You can add in supports in that same way or tell us you need an amendment done in that same way. Um, with the my tax tab, you'll also notice that you can look at your payments and you can make a payment. Um, you can do it right in the part where you have the return, it allows you, it'll tell you on the side that you can make a payment, but you can also do it through this tab. And if you click payment history, there is a blue button that's in the top right corner that says print. It will print a full statement of your account, business license, VAT, everything for every filing that you've had, any adjustments you've had and all payments that you've had and a full statement for you right from that tab. Um, there's also your services tab. John. There's also your services tab where the top part that says register and new tax type allows you to register for VAT. So if you're only a business license holder and you wanna be a VAT registrant, you can use that tab there to become a VAT registrant and just walk through the steps. Also, if you have a VAT, if you did a VAT filing and you actually had a credit where your expenses were larger than your sales, you can request a refund, that's the next tab. It'll start a refund case and like I said, they'll need to review to make sure you filed everything correctly, so they'll need your supports. But you can put in for a refund case. Refund cases, if there's any debt on your account, it'll go towards any business, any other business license or VAT debt. It'll go towards those debt first. But if you have no other debt on the account, it's wired to the bank account that you provide your refund officer. Um, and then you can also request a tax certificate in that same area as well if you need one. Um, just a few things to note. If you go to VAT and legal on the in-line revenue website. Keep going. There is something under general VAT guides that says VAT guidance on completing a VAT return. Like I said, that VAT return has twenty-seven lines and people sometimes get confused trying to figure out what all the lines are for. That VAT guide tells you what each line is with examples of what goes on each line, so you know which lines to use and not to use. You'll also notice they have certain industry guides because some industries may use more lines than others, you can look and see if your industry is on there and read through their guide as well. Um, I also talked about being able to change from cash to invoice and also moving from quarterly to monthly. There are forms for those, there's also a form to move from flat rate to standard rate or from standard rate to flat rate. You can find that again in VAT under forms and all of those documents are in the twenty-fifteen area. There are forms forty-three and forty-four. Um, there's a how to VAT, how to VAT? It's how to VAT, which is basically a VAT filing video that shows you through the guides. And then lastly, there's also wiring information. There's a bank account for business license, there's a bank account for VAT and there's a bank account for real property tax. We prefer you to pay through the portal, it is the fastest way because it's instantaneous. If you pay in the portal, you will get it right away, you get the receipt right away. If you are having issues paying through the portal, you can wire it from your bank account as opposed to having to go all the way to the bank and telling them, hey, I need to pay VAT or real property tax. You can do it from your computer. All of those wiring information, those accounts can be found on the website by going to either VAT, business license or real property tax and clicking wire transfer information. It has all those banking details there. If for whatever reason you paid your VAT to business license, please let us know in an ENQ because it will get applied to whichever account you sent it to. So if you paid your VAT to business license, it's gonna show up on your business license until you let us know that it's actually supposed to be for VAT. And that goes for anything that you pay, if you pay it to a different ministry account.
Thank you so much, thank you so much Ms. Hyler for your one hundred and seventy-two slides. Let's open the floor for questions for Ms. Hyler, yes sir.
I have a question, like a couple of questions actually. With the, with the food store or any, any business that you go to and you, they charge you VAT, but they don't have a certificate up. Do you pay the VAT? Should you pay the VAT?
Um, they should have the certificate up, you can always request to see their certificate. Um, I would not tell you to start a fight in the food store with the person charging you VAT. Um, the best thing you can do, I would say, is to actually pay it. We do have a price control line, there's also a, um, oh, what is, what is this actually called again? Compliance, there's also a compliance line where you can actually call, we have had people call in and say, I'm being charged VAT and I, it says VAT on here, but I don't think this person is a VAT registrant and we have actually gone in the system, seen they are not a VAT registrant and sent compliance to them for charging VAT to people who should not be charged VAT. So you can do that. I, I would say ask to see the VAT certificate first, don't just go there and tell them you can pay. But you gotta call the compliance and they'll look into it.
Okay, second part of that as well, I, we know, um, twenty twenty-four has already ended. This is twenty twenty-five and I know the VAT department hasn't given s- some of these businesses their certificates yet for the new year and they're still with the same certificate that says ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, should be paid a VAT.
The VAT certificate doesn't expire. When you get, when you register for VAT, your VAT stays. You stay a VAT registrant until you choose to cancel the VAT or until you reach a point where you're not hitting the threshold or you close the business and you say to cancel the VAT. Um, the only time you get a new VAT certificate is if you cancelled the VAT and now you're trying to become a VAT registrant again. Once you get the VAT certificate the one time, it doesn't change.
Let me understand this, they know in, in some of the grocery stores, they would have the, the certificate that is up in the, in the little frame. And it would have expired December of which year we are.
You're talking about the business license. Yeah, only the business license should expire.
Expire that we do.
Oh, okay.
So, all the VAT certificate, but it's good until March thirty-first.
Right. Final question. We all know VAT is a, is a form of taxation. And as somebody who's gonna be importing items, let's say you're bringing a tire and the tire costs a hundred dollars and I have to pay my environmental levy, I have to pay the duty on this tire and they'll add up with the actual price of the tires, your duty, your environmental levy and then charge you VAT on that. Is it legally charged, a tax on the tire?
That has been something that has been argued and that is very much not in my ballpark to answer. But that, that has been raised before.
The reason I'm asking is I'm a customer officer and that has been an issue that I've had from VAT started and that's something that I wanted to find out. Personally, is, is it legally charged, a tax to an already tax, which is your duty, which is your environmental levy, which is all these things, we bring this tire in or whatever your item is and then you should pay the VAT on all these different taxes that is already levied on.
I know, I, I have heard that before, I know it has been raised. I do not work for a legal team, so I cannot really answer that question.
That is again a company.
That, that's a company has to answer.
So we would rather answer by now, twenty twenty, twenty fifteen than now.
I was gonna tell you as far as a consumption tax. It is on everything, it is the final tax, it is on everything. So even if you have items that you bring in that does not have duty, it will still have VAT. Yes ma'am. Sorry, we'll come to you next right after, okay.
My question really was about, um, uh, the refund on that where I worked in a business where we claimed a couple of times and that was a flat line, so I wanted to, uh, cause I, I think I heard you mention that when you, if you're claiming a refund, it goes into an account and that hasn't happened in our business, so I'm just, I wanted, wanted to ask, uh, when did that started hap- start happening? Cause we haven't, we haven't, this has, we haven't tried to claim again for probably a couple of, uh, before a couple of years. So, but before when we did, they were kinda like, yeah, we don't know, we should do it here.
Okay, when, when you, when you put in a refund request, it, it starts off by a review, so someone reviews it. Once it's been approved and everything is cleared, what hap- the very next step that happens is our system says, okay, VAT and BL, are there any other debts for us to pay? If there are no other debts, even if it does pay another debt and you still have more credit, the next step happens is it goes to what we call a refund dispersment. So, what we need is your bank account to be in the system because the system is looking for a bank account information to be on the system for you. And then treasury will say, okay, we're doing VAT dispersments, we're gonna pay out all these people and then we just wire it to all those bank accounts, we just do one big massive file, send it to RBC, RBC wires it up. Now, if there was an issue and you didn't have the banking details in the system, you would have wound up on our rejected list, in which case someone should have contacted you.
You were told that we have a credit, so I, I, and that just never, you realize in anything, what is a credit?
Okay, we.
Yeah, cause all the information is already there and this, like, like I said, this was a couple of years ago and after we got frustrated enough, we're like, you know what, alright, let's just move on with this.
Okay, we would have to actually check your tin. Cause one, once you do, once you start the refund process and you already have a refund case and an officer is working on it, that's pretty much how the process goes unless for some reason somewhere in that process, the refund officer didn't care from you guys, didn't get supports or anything like that, that's the only time that refund case should have stopped. Yeah, so I, I'll have to look at the tin and see what happened, but if you have refunds on there, claim them because after a certain point in time, the system stops letting you claim them, like once you get to a certain amount of years, it won't, you won't see them showing up, you'll see the credits on your account, but you won't see them in the system, so once you see them, put in the refund request so that you can actually get the ball going on claiming those. We do know it is a long process, it takes a while. We have a lot of businesses and not a lot of refund officers, but I, I always tell people put the request in.
Yes ma'am.
So, is it possible to ask that question? Okay, so you were saying in the presentation earlier that right now we are violating the law of state of the taxes, but we should always register our land, right? Like, would you accept that?
Mm-hmm.
That's right, yeah, that's where that process is at, right? Somebody drops the papers by one day, I wasn't home, I was defending the information. Right, wait, so, I'm, I'm registered now and I have something that says a VAT, um, for the land. It says, it's an assessment number, location and so it's, um, it says, uh, grid reference. So I'm registered, but this doesn't mean I'm, I have a, a VAT situation where I'm, this, this just means I'm registered.
That means it registers for property tax.
That's for property tax.
Property tax, right.
Yeah, so that has nothing to do with the VAT.
That has nothing, it just says that.
It just, yeah, it just tells you your, yeah, it just tells you your current standing if you owe or not.
Right, and as a non-identical, there is, there is zero.
Yeah, correct.
So, okay, so that's, that's one thing, then the, the import. So the import is to, to, if you have a short-term rental and you, as a, a behemoth as of now, it's optional if you want to have a business license to own a short-term rental, is that correct? If you also.
I don't, I think, I think, I think half to half a business license to do a short-term rental.
I think the threshold is a hundred thousand dollars to.
Well, on your, um,
Sorry, I can't read the numbers.
No, on your, I, on your website, um, the government, the, the, because I, I checked it out, it said, if you have a foreigner in your short-term rentals, yes, you must register for a business license to run that. But as a behemoth, you do not need one, that's what it said on the website, so that.
That is, that is correct, um, behemoth, behemoth in a short-term rentals, once, once is that your personal name?
Yeah, behemoth.
Yes.
If you have it in a limited company, you need to have a business license. All foreigners automatically register for, for business license in short-term.
Yes, and if a foreigner is your partner, same day, doesn't matter. So that part is clear. So as a behemoth, if you're running a short-term rental, it is in your personal name and you, customs. The only time, so if you want to use customs as a part of your expenses, you would have to have a business license, right?
Correct.
That's what, okay, so you have to, so that is no longer optional. If you want to, all of those expenses for bringing in materials or whatever for your short-term rental, that will only, you know, you don't need to use that if you registered the business license.
Yes.
One more question. The tin, I have one tin for a business that I have. I still have that tin and I can make, put out the businesses under there. You were saying if, if you have five businesses and one of them meets the threshold, then automatically the other three, uh, are all taxed whether they're one hundred or not, they're just added on.
Yeah, if you have one tin, if you have one tin as a sole trader
Yes.
and one of those five licenses makes the threshold,
Yes.
all, everything under that tin has to charge VAT as well.
Even if, even if all, but even if all five together hit the threshold,
You still have to register.
Then you still have to register as well.
But if only one of that five makes the threshold of a hundred thousand, all have to be taxed. So just say you have one business that is a, a grocery store.
Right.
You have an import, you have a clothing store, those are at nil. But if that one store has that a hundred thousand,
Right.
everything that's under that tin are subject to VAT as well.
Right, okay, so that, so then, so then say one is a hundred thousand, one is twenty, one is, it would just all come up to what, that would then be your total amount that you have VAT on, goes by.
Yes, yes.
So then, what, why would you have just that one tin? So then what would be the, the reason to have more than one tin?
Um, some persons have, may have a sole trader. Um, you know, I may be just a sole trader myself.
Yes.
I may have another tin with me and a partner, that's a separate tin for my sole trader tin.
Okay.
I may also have a limited company, that's now another tin now apart from my partnership apart from my sole trader.
So these are categories.
Yes, so as you move into a different category, move of partnership, move to limited, you get a separate tin, sole trader tin that only for you, one person for that sole trader tin.
So, uh, that person's sole trader tin cannot get five tins? It just, it depends on.
No, just one tin, yeah, it just depend on which, which category, now falls against one.
Understand, yes.
We're doing a bit of a cleanup because the, um, we have multiple persons, multiple sole traders with multiple tins. So when we now see that, we convert everything under one tin as a sole trader.
Thank you.
Well, I have a question, um, we were, this was, um, this is, I gotta go first then. Could you or anybody speak to the access that inland revenue has to your A, your business? That inland revenue has to your A, your business bank account? And your personal, and I know, I see why you all give limit, and your personal bank account. Because I have been told that in the instance of being audited. If you're sole partnership, you will have access to all of our personal bank accounts.
Um, we do have access to, um, to that, that is, that is our audit and compliance team. Um, if the government feels of this, um, you are not giving us the correct amount of totals, you're not paying your taxes. Uh, we do have a plan in place to get to the public, to get to the banks and to wherever, you know, fines or stars that relate to the business. Um, do you have even?
So that's a yes.
Yeah, yeah, um, just like any other, um, income or tax administration services.
I, I figured the banks would have it anyway, so.
It's part, it's part of our powers, we, we, last year, we had a full campaign expressing what our powers were. And that was part of our powers, um, to have access to accounts or, or liens or. Things of that nature, imprisonment on heavy fines, et cetera, et cetera, yeah.
It's part of the legislation provision to be able to request banks to provide statement. But there are some differences between the activities that you reported and what, what we perceive as not to grant, so we have the powers within the statute.
But this would only be in a case of law.
Yes, yeah. Yes, ma'am, I think you had another question.
Oh, uh, so you're saying that's part of your powers, so what is the procedure before you have access to, and then then you take the money out? The way you can.
I, I think, I, I, I could, I could stand to be corrected, but I think when you come to a point of that.
Yes.
You're coming down to the last stages of us trying to either communicate with you.
Right.
Or get you to come in or f- get you to pay or whatever the circumstance may be. Things like, like that, uh, or power of sale.
Right.
Um, that you would have seen or even fines and imprisonment are the la- are the last stages.
That's what I'm saying, you go to.
Yeah. Let me make sure I make it clear, the Department of Inland Revenue is not in the business of closing anyone business down, not in the business of taking anyone homes.
Correct.
So we try to reach out to you multiple ways we can. If we at that point, we have exhausted every possible way to get you to come in, to be compliant with us.
Yes. Yes.
So that, that is the utmost last resort, the department will strike and stand on that.
Yes, that's correct.
But that's in court, is, is it taken to people in court?
No.
Um, we do, I mean. We wouldn't take you to court for that, we would try to work with you, we, we, we are, we are totally grounded by the government, so we don't wanna put no one on that home. We don't wanna close our business down, so we are prepared to work with you at all measures.
Yes.
So going to court will be the absolute last resort we will ever resort to.
So, so like you said, you don't need to go to court, you can just work out with the bank.
Correct, that is correct.
Yeah, I, to think of what you said, it goes, it, it, um, the same goes for property taxes. If you are delinquing your property taxes, we have an internal collection that try to reach out to you to make some kind of payment arrangement. If that doesn't work, it's then referred to the private collection agency who then adds on a fee of twenty five percent of your tax. And from there, it then goes to power of sale where the property will be auctioned. So we, we try as best as we can before we go to that.
And even with the power of sale for your property to be auctioned.
Yeah, together in your home.
Once the, once it is released, you still have time.
To buy them.
To, to, to deal with the taxes before it can actually be officially auctioned. So even in that, you still have, I think, about thirty days, if I'm correct, to even settle the bill before it becomes a live auction. Any final questions before, before we close out? Great, so just a few things that we, uh, may have missed and ladies, um, correct me if I'm wrong with anything. Um, all persons generating turnover must have a business license. Whether you working out of your car, a stall, a storefront, your home, whatever it is. Coconut water on the side of the road, whatever it is, you must have a business license, that's just a part of the act, a part of the law within the Bahamas. What is turnover? A lot of persons feel as though turnover is the profit that they make from their business, it is not that. Turnover is everything. Absolutely everything, before you pay your staff, before you buy any, everything. That is what your turnover is, it is not your profit, alright? We want persons, and we encourage persons all the time to be honest. It doesn't make sense, I mean, we're all, we, we, we know your businesses, most of your businesses, et cetera. Um, so it doesn't make sense for a business like Bambooshack to tell us that in twenty twenty four, they made twenty five thousand dollars. We're gonna query that, so we want you to be honest, we want you to submit your, your turnover. It's better for you to submit eighty thousand than to say you made zero. There's no need to fail the hundred thousand dollar threshold if you're at eighty or ninety, correct? Correct, alright. And then another thing that we, I think we said, but I can't remember, all licenses under the same tin must be renewed at the same time. So if you have five, if you have three, if you have eighteen, they must all be renewed at the same time. If you had also a license in twenty twenty one and you want to renew now or you don't want it anymore. Before you can cancel that license, you must renew that license. So you have to bring it to current, let's face the facts, if you have not had it for many years, the government wants their money before you cancel that. I'm just gonna say it as it is. So when you renew that license and you bring it up to date and pay your fees, you may decide to keep it. Because it's on, it's on you to renew and file on time before January thirty first. So I just wanna recognize two, I think they're still here, I'm not sure, well, they were here. Two of our local D I R staff mem- members, that was Ms. Madeline Kelly, who's the supervisor in the north. And Mr. Romeo Cashew's assessor in our main office. I'd also like to recognize the local police, um, who are in our presence today, in charge of North Eluthra, Superintendent Adrian Knowles. And also here on Harbor Island Inspector Torenia Taylor, I think I pronounced that correctly, I did not. Can you please give me the proper pronunciation? To. To Ken, wow, they wrote, okay, I got you. My apologies, I'd like to thank our presenters here today, Ms. Barton, Ms. Sweeting, Ms. Hyler, they did a wonderful job. Definitely like to thank all of you for attending today, this is actually one of the better turnouts that we've had. Um, in our family island visits, so we're very proud of that and you guys are very engaging, we appreciate you. Like to thank Mr. Bennerby for ensuring that we actually came to Harbor Island. Um, ev- if Mr. Bennerby can have us here every week, he would do it, we don't have it in the budget, Mr. Bennerby. Alright, but I would like to thank him for ensuring that we came here. Yes, and most importantly, as Mr. Bennerby, um, poked me in my side, I must recognize Mrs. Anita Bennerby. Because he said he would not be able to go home if I did not call her name tonight. And finally, we also want to remind you guys that everything that was presented here, all of the facts, all of the acts, all of the law, everything that we use as a basis. For what we say and what we enforce is found on our website, inlandrevenue.finance.gov bs. We're very active on social media, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, TikTok, absolutely everything, we respond on that. Everything that we send to you, we send to our staff, so that when you call us, we won't say that we don't know. Alright, and this is an ongoing, um, campaign that we're doing, our next stop, I think it's going to be Exuma. Um, followed by Grand Bahama, and then I think Andres after that, and we'll probably circle back around, um, all, all the way, so, yes sir.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
The next time when you guys are going around, maybe you wanna have your fly out a week or two in advance, cause I, I'm, I'm sure most of us heard about this today.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know, an hour, go two hours ago.
Yeah, and, and unfortunately, some, most of the time, we have things done in advance. Um, but when we, when we make plans, a lot of things change, and then some things are just like, okay, we have to do this now. Um, so like I said, we try our best to get it on the website, we try to get it on socials, we send it to local government. Um, and the person's on, on property, um, to try to spread the word. Um, but it's up to you guys, um, to help us spread the word, um, and get it to everybody, but, uh, like I said, you said you heard it today and you're here. This was the best turnout we've had in our family island visits, so give yourself a round of applause for that. Thank you again, everybody, as Mr. Bennerby said, we're here, we'll be, um, at the local administrator's office tomorrow.
Oh, yes, and also at the, um.
Live store.
Johnson Plaza.
Yeah, and then Live Plaza.
A live store.
Johnson's.
Johnson's Plaza.
Yeah, Johnson's Plaza.
That's where live.
Yeah, so anybody needing assistance, again, um, you could get our emails from us before we go, if you want to reach us directly. Um, and then we'll be good to go, so thank you guys for coming, I will look forward to seeing you again in the near future.